Okay, please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Our Father.
Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, for our ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item C is the mayor's presentation of proclamation to Napoleon Lady Cat's basketball team. We're going to head over to the fire department.
On to item D, approval of minutes from March 15th, 2021, regular council meeting, and the two, March 22nd, 2021, special council meeting. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. Okay, they'll stand approved. We're going to item E, citizen communication. If there's anyone on the WebEx call that would like to address council on something other than what is on the agenda, please do so using the chat. Item F, investment update by Meter Investments. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you, it's my pleasure to address Council and Finance Committee, again, and chair.
Could you do us a favor for the record? Just introduce yourself and your name and your company you're with.
Sure, my name is Eileen Stanek, of Meter Investment Management.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will let you go ahead and give us the updates that you've prepared for us.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it. I have shared my screen, so hopefully everyone can see it.
Yes.
Okay. To see if it will change the speaker. Okay. Did the page change, question?
Yes. It did not, yes.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, the WebEx is a little different than some of the Zoom platform and such that I've used. But in any event, again, wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to provide an update. Clearly coming out of 2020, which was a year for the record source, where the stock market, we have seen the fastest decline in the stock market, turned around, followed up very quickly with the fastest, largest increase in the stock market. In this volatility that we have experienced in the stock market carried over, of course, to the economic data, where the employment picture became very dire with the largest drop in jobs, followed up by a large increase in jobs in April. And then, of course, the time, most expensive stimulus package at $2.2 trillion, you know, served to provide relief to many folks during these unprecedented times as we ended the longest economic expansion, which previously had been now 128 months. So technically, we are still in recession, we are rebounding, of course, but the committee that decides when the recession is over has not done so yet. But 2021 has, of course, started out to be a new year, and things have started to look better. However, when we think in terms of, you know, some of the things that perhaps are different as we compare 2020 to 21, one factor is these changes in consumer behavior, which may be affecting the inflation numbers that we will start to see. As we recall, the Fed has a dual mandate of stable prices, which is looking at inflation. And as we can see, just looking at the weights in the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, we can see the changes that have occurred in the consumer spending. And so this clearly is going to have an impact on some of the inflation numbers that we see. But as folks are able to turn completely to work and we no longer have everyone working from home and businesses are able to reopen, we would expect to perhaps see the consumer behavior start to approach what it was prior to the pandemic. So as we see some of these changes in inflation, we think some of this will be transitory as we get through this kind of adjustment period, perhaps over the next six months. Now, the Fed has another mandate, which is full employment. In this chart, we are looking at the number of persons that are employed through non-farm payrolls. And certainly, we can see, looking at the trend, when economy did shut down, you know, the employment picture, the drop in jobs was very significant. Of course, with the rebound that we experienced with businesses being able to reopen, we've got some very positive news on the employment front. Right now, we have the unemployment rate at 6%. I think the media has been celebrating that. However, when we look at these numbers, we can see that there still are a significant number of folks who are still without a job, who had a job previously. And in essence, you know, we're looking at around 6 to 7 million people who still are unemployed. So this is still a big gap that will still continue to take some time to fill. Now granted, a high proportion of those jobs are in the service sector. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, the small businesses have really taken a large hit, we believe, with the pandemic. And the small businesses tend to employ a fair amount of service sector people. So again, we expect that this trend will take some time to get us back to what we would refer to as full employment. Of course, we want to keep in mind that the Fed has tweaked their view on employment to extend it to what they're referring to as maximum employment. And maximum employment means that basically anyone who wants a job has a job, and that basically looking at the various categories of wage earners. So we're currently in an environment where the high wage earners, which are defined as folks earning in excess of $60,000 per year, are back to pre-COVID levels. But when we look at the low wage earners, which are those folks earning less than $25,000, they are still down about 25%. And so the Fed would like to see not only, of course, the high wage earners being fully employed, but also the low wage earners. So this is an extension of how they had previously viewed the labor market, and we believe this will contribute to the Fed being very slow to move interest rates off of the current range of 0 to .25%. Now, when we look at what has happened here with interest rates, and this is looking at the U.S. Treasury yield curve, the gray line represents where interest rates were at the end of 2019. The orange line is where interest rates were at December of 2020. And then the blue line is where we are seeing interest rates now. And again, this is Treasury rates across the full maturity spectrum from one month out to 30 years. And as we can see, the short-term interest rates are very anchored to what the Fed is doing, which is keeping interest rates low and locked into that 0 to .25% range. But the term interest rates, the longer-term interest rates, are much higher than what they were even at the end of last year. And when we look out the longer term, the level of interest rates is pretty close to where we were at the end of 2019. So what this is telling us is that the market is pricing in the likelihood that inflation will start to rise and that economic growth will be strong going forward. However, recognizing as well that the Fed is controlling this short-term section of the yield. So the steepness in the level of interest rates, we believe, has presented opportunities to continue to add investments out longer term as we have maturities or, in the case of new funds coming into the investment portfolio. Now, the Federal Reserve does issue what they refer to as forward guidance, which is basically forecasts as it relates to, you know, key economic indicators, as well as where they project that overnight Fed funds rate will be. And as we can see in this table, and this was their most recent forecast from their meeting that ended mid-March, so just a couple weeks ago, they only update this forecast on a quarterly basis, so we will not see an update until June. But we can see that the Fed is forecasting that GDP, gross domestic product, for 2021 will be in excess of 6%, but then it will start to tail off, trail off here throughout the next two years, and slowly return back to what they feel is the capacity of the U.S. economy, which is to grow at a 1.48% rate. The unemployment rate, they are expecting continued improvement in the unemployment rate, as I had mentioned, we were at 6% currently, so they are forecasting that yes, unemployment will continue to improve, and that will continue on through 2022 and 2023. However, the inflation picture, the forecast is currently for inflation to remain relatively stable. So as we can see, their projections for inflation are, you know, just a little over 2%. And the Fed has a target of inflation, on average, being at 2%. So when we look at the inflation numbers now, inflation has been well below 2% for basically about a decade. So even once inflation does hit 2% on average, it will take some time to hit that on average at 2% level. So this is contributing to the Fed's forecast of keeping interest rates locked in, as I said, at that 0 to .25% range, which works out to an effective rate of around .1, and their projection is through 2023. So what that, again, what that means for us from an investment perspective is that we anticipate short-term interest rates will remain low. But as we are seeing, and as we've seen, the longer-term interest rates are ahead of the Fed. So they are already reflecting a much improved environment than what we have experienced here over the past year. So looking at the city's portfolio, and this is as of February 28th, did not have all the March data yet, but as of the end of February, there was cash, that, some of that has been subsequently reduced. When we say cash, that means monies that are invested in short-term overnight-type investment options. In March, there was 1.5 billion that was moved out of cash into the investment portfolio. But at the end of February, we had just shy of $18 million invested in securities. Asset allocation was very heavily weighted into the FDIC insured products at 85%. It was 15% in U.S. government agencies. The high concentration in the FDIC insured products was a function of prior activity whereby, as interest rates started to fall, particularly last year, CD rates were a little slow to follow market rates, and so that presented some opportunity to take advantage of in the CD area. The weighted average maturity of the portfolio was less than two years. If we think back to October, when I last presented an update, we were closer, I believe, to around two and a half years. So the portfolio has gotten a little bit shorter, which is good in view of what we are seeing now with longer-term interest rates having moved up. The weighted average on the portfolios remains above 1%, or 1.09%. And then we can compare that to Star Ohio, and we have a comparison, a circled comparison. But currently, at the end of the month, Star Ohio was yielding 0.09%. So the portfolio currently is yielding the full 1% above the overnight option of Star Ohio. Maturity distribution, we were relatively light out in the longer-term holdings. Generally, strategically, we'd like, think it's appropriate to have about 40% of the investment portfolio maturing beyond three years. We were at 28%. As I had mentioned, there was 1.5 million added into the portfolio in March. Those funds were invested primarily out in that four- to five-year bucket. So we now stand with having about 35% of the portfolio matured beyond three years. So as we have maturities here within this year, we will have opportunities to fill in some of the longer and relatively longer maturities, primarily this two- to three-year area, to take advantage of this rising interest rate environment. Comparing the performance of the city's portfolio to Star Ohio, this is the benchmark that is stated in the investment policy. As we can see, you know, Star Ohio, of course, has an average basis, and this is looking at the 12-month average yield of Star Ohio, has continued to drop, but that would be the gold line. And the green line is the yield of the city's investment portfolio, which we can see had, has plateaued. So clearly, you know, in this environment, as I said, as interest rates are moving up, we would expect this trend, you know, to continue. We would expect the Star Ohio yield on average to start to plateau. And then, of course, the yield on the city's portfolio would start to pick up as we are having maturities and reinvesting, you know, in the current environment. So lastly, we have the holdings detail that shows the city's investments as of February 28th. And so again, this just lists out all of the individual holdings. I will say that, you know, we do take advantage of some opportunities that the local bank was offering with certificates of deposits, CDAs in particular, which are, again, FDIC insured deposits. So again, making certain that we are, you know, bringing into the mix the local bank as well. And again, continuation of the city's investment holdings. So with that being said, I'd like to take any questions that may be out there.
Thank you very much, I appreciate all the information. Mr. Mayor.
Eileen, I'm sorry, Eileen. The low rates being projected in 2023, am I understanding this right? Right now, the Fed is buying a bunch of U.S. Treasuries? And in order to raise rates, they have to stop buying those and then start selling them, and then raise rates?
Um, when we look at what we anticipate to be the, I would say, kind of, you know, first of all, the catalyst for the Fed to, you know, to stop this easy monetary policy, of course, the first is going to be, you know, meeting their mandates, maximum employment and stable prices. Then, once they have accomplished that, then we would envision that their next step will be to scale back the quantitative easing that has been underway. Again, to your point, quantitative easing is where they are buying Treasury securities in the marketplace with the objective of lowering, tempering the rise in longer-term interest rates. And the Fed has been on a tear doing that. And their balance sheet is just, you know, unprecedented levels as well. But looking at the playbook that they used coming out of the financial crisis, that was the step that they took, was that they first felt very comfortable that the recovery was sustainable. And I think that's a key point, is the recovery is sustainable. Have they met their mandates? Okay, now, the next step is to stop the quantitative easing. And in essence, what that means is that we will just see Treasuries, securities in the marketplace, and we will start to let those, as those holdings mature, not reinvest them. And again, we had seen them start to do this in 2018, 19, before the pandemic hit. They were starting to unwind the balance sheet. And then, of course, everything got, you know, switched, everything had to switch gears. But that being said, assuming the recovery will be sustainable, then yes, we would anticipate them to follow that same path. Stop the quantitative easing, and then at that point, start to increase interest rates. But as their latest projections is that we won't start to see anything to that effect until 2023.
Okay.
Now granted, that's a forecast, so we always want to keep that in mind, too.
Yeah, right, because the numbers I'm hearing are, that's a great idea of 23, but if, in order to stop quantitative easing, it's going to be beyond that, it's going to be closer to 24. Is, I listened to somebody recently, and they made a pretty logical argument about that. So I'm just curious what Meter and Associates thinks. No, I appreciate it, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions?
Nope.
Kelly, are you on with us?
Yes, I am.
Just wanted to check, see if you had any questions or anything for Eileen before we let her go.
No, we talk already, thank you.
Okay, I thought. Well, thank you for joining us, we really appreciate the update.
Thanks, Eileen.
I appreciate it as well, and if any questions come up afterward, just feel free to reach out to me or pass them through Kelly, and I'm sure she'll pass them along.
We'll do that, thank you.
Thank you. Hope everyone stays safe.
You too. Okay, we're moving on to item G, reports from council committees. G1, Finance and Budget Committee met on March 22nd, 2021, and accepted the first quarter budget adjustments. G2, Safety and Human Resource Committee met on March 22nd. I'm sorry, they did not meet due to lack of agenda items. And G3, Technology and Communications Committee met earlier this evening. Ross?
Thank you, Council President. We just reviewed the new city website page.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item I, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. I1 is ordinance, or I'm sorry, resolution number 009-21, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds over $25,000 and authorizing entering into a professional service contract with AeroTech Incorporated for the purpose of providing supplemental services to the City of Napoleon, Ohio, Engineering Department, and declaring an emergency. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Okay, and suspensions requested on this. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. Just to reiterate kind of one of the things that we talked about at the last meeting. It's been a struggle attracting new engineers to the engineering department, and this is global. This isn't, this isn't isolated to just us. So we did this when we hired Zach Barry, is we went to a hiring agency to hire an individual and contracted with them. The contract is for six months. It's a little bit pricier than what we would normally hire for a typical engineering position, but it gets us somebody in the door. And this, we tried the conventional methods before as well, and we're unsuccessful, so we're going back to AeroTech, requesting suspension because we did go through the interview process before we came to council to make sure that we had a candidate that was suitable for what we needed. And we don't want to lose this person to another employer, so hence the reason for suspension.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Can you remind me what the responsible things are briefly? What they're doing?
Please, the staff engineer, we have two positions or classifications. One is a licensed staff engineer, and one is unlicensed. The individual we have in mind is unlicensed. They would be combined of both field and office work. When in the office, it'll take some training, but we'd like to have them design some of our projects that we have, rather than hiring engineering firms. There will be times when they'll be in the field and essentially be performing the same duties as our construction inspector. They'll also be doing surveying in support of both the design and the inspection jobs. Day-to-day, they could be doing anything from designing a project, inspecting a project, running prints, interacting with the public, whether it be a sidewalk inspection, or sewer inspection, or getting them the proper information so they can have the work done. They could be doing a little bit of everything, but our primary focus is going to be getting the individual trained for designing, since they are. The individual we have in mind is graduating with a bachelor's of civil engineering in May. We'd just like to get him into the staff. He said he could start in May.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we're hoping.
You know how long the contract would be with AeroTech for this individual?
The contract they're proposing is actually 12 months. When we had Zach, when we hired Zach, that one was for six. AeroTech feels it's a, it works out better from their experience for 12. That allows us to get a better feel for the individual. And since it's a contract, we are allowed to terminate with 30 days' notice. So if it's not the right person, we can get out of the contract.
Good. And vice versa, if this person didn't want to, it'd be 30-day.
Yep. And it also essentially gives us, when we hire an individual directly, we have a one-year probationary period. Essentially, we're getting that twice. We'll have the one-year contract, and then if we decide to invite that person to come on full-time after the contract, we will still get our year probationary period.
So do we pay the, do we pay AeroTech upfront for the full 12 months?
They bill us about a week behind our payroll, and I believe it's net 30 to pay.
Okay.
So they'll essentially be fronting the money for a few weeks, and then they'll invoice us. We'll process it and send payment back.
Thank you. Any other questions? Entertain a motion for suspension.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the role on suspension.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, and please call the roll on the resolution.
Laurie, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. It has passed on first read under suspension. Moving on to item I2, resolution number 010-21. A resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds over $25,000 for the purpose of implementation of a GIS system, and award said implementation to Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and suspension is requested on this one as well.
I think suspension was, was meant for number three on this one. So, but if you want to suspend on this one, it'd be welcome to, just to get the contract going with Stan Tech as well, but that's, that's up to council. But this is a, this is for the implementation of our GIS system, and award to Stan Tech Consulting, who's been updating and upgrading our GIS system over the past several years, something that's been in the works for, for a long time now, a lot of investment, but we're winding down to the very end, and hopefully we'll have an end product, and in the end, hopefully have somebody even hired in-house to manage our GIS system as well, so we can start doing all of the inputs ourselves and everything else. That's another position in the engineering department, so. If I don't take any questions.
So are we able to use this yet?
Yeah, we use it now. So, this is, this is part of what's already hooked into the tablets out in the field.
Yeah, our guys out in the field have access to it. We don't, at this time, have a public portal, but we're hoping to work towards that. But the guys use it to track in real-time hydrant flushing, we can track valve exercising, they have access to what information is in the unit, in the GIS, they have access to that in the field to assist them in locating utilities.
I think I'll make a motion for suspension also.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing on Rox, please call the roll on the resolution.
Laurie? Yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Okay, moving on to item I3, resolution number 011-21. Resolution amending resolution number 063-20, the city's yearly reoccurring cost legislation, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President, and this one will be requesting suspension as well. This is to, for, to add JT's building maintenance and construction. During the pandemic, we got a lot of CARES Act money, and we needed to spend it fast, and it was just a requirement that we had to spend it by the end of the year. So, he was, he's a local contractor, did a good job for us. You know, one of the only ones we could really find to, to get some of the work done that we needed to, that we couldn't get done in-house. So, we hired him to install some of the touchless fixtures throughout the city, the, you know, parks and some of our buildings, including this building. And he, since the work ended at the end of the year, we're making, we're expensing it this year, he also does our nuisance mowing, so we'll be pushing right up against the $25,000. And also, he was the low quote to do some work at the Police Department Building as well, to upgrade the locker room area, and so Chief Mack was going to utilize him for a separate PO.
That building needs work.
Yeah, it needs some work, so.
We're taking down the wood paneling from 1975, what?
So, yeah, that's, that'll, that'll put it, definitely put us over the $25,000 mark, so this is really, the suspension request is, is so that we can get him started on that new locker room setup for the, for the new officer.
And all this money, that isn't not taxpayer money at all, it's all the CARES Act funds, is that correct?
It's all taxpayers' money, but it's, yes, that, the, the facility piece, that's actually out of his budget, so the, the Police Department.
Right.
But, but the CARES Act money was, yes, that was the...
Some Biden bucks?
Not Biden, Joe Doe.
Some Biden bucks, yeah, Joe Biden, some of his bucks. Yeah, okay.
The older one was, was the Trump money.
Right. Donny dollars, none of Biden's.
Donny dollars, yeah, Joe Doe.
Joe Doe.
Make a motion for suspension.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Laurie? Yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Rox, please call the roll on resolution.
Laurie? Yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Item I4 is resolution number 012-21. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of sodium chloride in cooperation with ODOT, and declaring an emergency. And you guessed it, suspension's request.
Yep.
Motion?
Second.
This is the annual salt contract, we got to tell the state we want some?
Yes.
And they'll tell us the price till we deliver.
That's, that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And since they're...
Anything to add to that, Chad?
Eight times?
Just that they give us a deadline to do it all.
Yeah.
Forgot that.
Well, it's usually pretty quick.
April 30 is when I have to have the contract turned in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Have more documentation from it.
Do we have an idea what the cost is this year?
Haven't heard. Well, it'd be around, I'd love to see 30-some dollars a ton again, but it's probably going to be more around 75. Even that, I'm hopeful it doesn't go higher.
How much room do we have in the shed?
Oh, we could hold several ton, what did Jeff say, we have about 1,300 ton in there?
Yeah, so we usually keep on 1,700 plus on hand.
I think Jeff is on it if we need it.
I'm just curious, if he's, if he's on and wants to answer, that's fine, I just...
Jeff? There he is.
Uh, I think I got it open now. The, we roughly used about 500 ton this year, right? We do have room, so I'm hoping to order a little more this year. But we have probably 900 in the, in the bin right now. I, I, again, I can't stress enough, thank council for that bin, it definitely takes pressure off my guts.
You keep saying you're welcome, but we weren't on council.
Right.
You're welcome.
But we would have said...
I do have prices for the last three years, if you're interested. In '21, we paid 53.77. In '20, we paid $80.25. And in '19, we paid 71.47. So I would look towards the higher of that, because we did use a little more this year. I think everybody did, so. Rubbing my Christopher Ball, I would say Chad probably hit it pretty close, 75 to 80.
Yes, we should have asked Eileen from Meter when she was here, what her projections are.
For, for salt contracts.
For salt. We'll have to coordinate it next time with her, and we'll try to ask her. Yeah, that'd be nice.
There is, I believe I read that there is a major salt company has closed up, so that there is going to be less supply.
Well, hopefully we'll get our price before ODOT hears that, that'd be nice. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Jeff.
Make the motion for suspension.
Thank you.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Laurie? Yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Please call the roll on the resolution.
Laurie? Yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Moving on to item I5, resolution number 013-21. A resolution authorizing a contract with the Village of Florida for the purpose of operating a water supply distribution system, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. We touched on this a little bit last, at the last meeting, but I just wanted to go over some of the detail in the contract with Florida. This is something that we've been working on with, with staff in-house, and Jeff Knowlton with the mayor of Village of Florida. They have it in, in their possession now, so this is the, the draft of it that we're working from. We haven't gotten any comments back from their, from their legal counsel yet, so there may be some, some tweaks, but I think it captures everything that we've, we've discussed and, and offered to them, so just going through it, you know, there's minimums, there's minimal requirements for pressure, we have a delivery point, we'll, we'll own the meter, they'll own the, the meter pit, and we have a billing procedure outlined, nothing changes there. We have the rate, which we had discussed, 7.77. Again, they're, they're minimums, and just some provisions that they kind of, you know, negatively impact our water system with any requirements that they have. If they add anybody to the system, they have to let us know. Just kind of going through this real quick, kind of rapid fire, so stop me if you've got any questions or...
Thank you.
The term, what we did is, we didn't say 30 years, we said to whenever our last payment would be on the debt service. So that last debt payment is July 1 of 2049, so that's when the contract term ends. We also have the rate review commission piece in this as well. They would meet with the Board of Public Affairs and Water and Sewer Committee, and just be comprised of different members of satellite communities, in this case, just anybody with a new contract, so it would be Village of Florida, and two, two from the City of Napoleon, appointed by city council. That number could grow into more, if, you know, more satellite communities sign on as, as contract customers. And then just other, I guess, non, non-water-related, I guess, language in the contract here, so scrolling through these, and that, that pretty much covers everything. So if they do want to terminate the contract, they have to, you know, similar to the last contract, if they want to terminate early, they have to pay back a certain amount, going back to previous usage, so that the, that the Napoleon system isn't harmed. They have to really want to get out of it to get out of it, you know, that's the... And that covers, and it, and a, very, very briefly covers everything in the contract, it's not overly complicated, so if that all, I'll take any questions.
All right, I think four in a row is enough for suspensions, so we won't do that on this one. Okay, if there's no more questions, Rox, please call the roll on the resolution.
Laurie? Yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that will be moving on to second read. Okay, item 6 is ordinance number 014-21, and ordinance supplement, supplementing the annual appropriation magic, supplement number 2 for the year 2021, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
Second.
Okay, Kelly, and you're susp, you're requesting suspension as well on this one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. These are for the first quarter budget adjustments, this is what we went over with the Finance and Budget Committee. For the general funds, it's a stuff increase that was different than the original budget. And then for Fund 221, the Napoleon Aquatic Center, this is the bond issuance costs that have to run through our books as a pastor, and also the auditor fees for the real estate settlement. For Funds 277, the probation officer grant funds, back a number of years ago, there was money transferred into the grant account to pay for costs that were not paid for by the grant, and now those costs are paid directly out of Fund 275, so this is to transfer the money from the 277 grant fund to the 275 grant, or the fund to clear the grant fund. And then Fund 288 is the J-Rig grants. There was an advance done in 2017 to be able to have cash flow, and it went to the new grant from the old grant, and this is just putting the money back to the general fund from that grant to also clear that fund. For Fund 400, the capital improvement fund, Chief Mack received a donation from the Union for a part of the Safety City Tarp. The total cost of the Tarp is $5,000, the Union is donating $2,000, so we're appropriating that. The next one is under IT, this is the camera and accessories were more than what was originally budgeted by $1,200, so that's requesting to appropriate that money. And then also under the 400 account for the street improvements, this is the American Road Law portion that we appropriated last year in 2020, it was a pass-through, not all of the bills were paid, so we're just re-appropriating that amount, and the revenue offsets it. So the total for Fund 400 is 1.353. And then for Fund 510, the water revenue fund, this is to cover the cost of the issuance for the bonds, not covered by the premium, so there was about $8,000 that was left, so it will be transferred from the 510 to the 519, where the bond was paid from. And then 519, the water improvement fund, this is also the bond issuance cost, so we have to show it through our books as a pass-through, the revenue offsets it. The same with Fund 520, the sewer utility revenue fund, that's the bond and then the issuance costs. And then also to transfer money from the 520 to the 532 Williams Pump Station to cover the debt payment. So the total for the supplemental for the first quarter adjustments is $6,331,250.5. Is there any question?
Nope, I don't think so. Do you have a motion for suspension?
Motion.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Laurie? Yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. If there's no questions or comments, then call the roll, please, on the ordinance.
Laurie? Yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Okay, moving on to item I7, ordinance number 015-21, and ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to make appropriation transfers, transfer of appropriation 1 from 1... one from one appropriation line item to another appropriation line item pursuant to ORC Section five seven zero five point four zero for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, as listed in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency. Suspension is requested as well. Kelly, I'm sorry, motion?
So moved.
Okay, Kelly?
Thank you. This is to move $12,953 from the Personal Services to the other. This will match what the court is requesting amendments with the state until June 30th of 2021, and then we'll have to appropriate for the new grant period during the second quarter budget adjustments, and they'll still be able to hire their part-time probation officer once the state approves.
Thank you. Have any questions or comments? Would like, someone like to make a motion for suspension?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Laurie, yes.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yeah.
Joe.
Yes. Any questions or comments? Kelly? Hearing none, Roxanne, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Laurie, yes.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yeah.
Joe.
Yes. Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Item I eight, resolution number zero one six dash two one, a resolution authorizing Finance Director to transfer certain fund balances, transfer number two, from respective funds to other funds per Section five seven zero five point one four, ORC, on an as-needed basis in fiscal year 2021, listed in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency.
Motion? Second.
You guys do that again. All right, Kelly?
Thank you. This is the other side of the equation for the supplementals, for the four funds off the supplemental, this is to transfer to the revenue account.
I'm guessing you would like a suspension on this one as well?
Yes, please. It completes, it's the third piece from the budget adjustments.
Thank you.
Motion for suspension.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Laurie, yes.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yeah.
Joe.
Yes. Any questions on the resolution? Hearing none, Roxanne, please call the roll on the resolution.
Laurie, yes.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yeah.
Joe.
Yes. Okay, that has passed on first, first read under suspension. Okay, moving on to item J, second reads and ordinances of resolutions. J one is resolution number zero zero eight dash one, or two one, a resolution authorizing the City Manager of the City of Napoleon to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and receive financial assistance from the Ohio Department of Transportation, State Infrastructure Bank Loan Program for the Oakwood Avenue and American Road Project and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Uh, we're still on track right now. I think the bids open up April fourteenth, April fourteenth, so we're still working towards this end here to receive bids, make sure that our pricing is right, and then go to the State Infrastructure Bank to seek a loan, and then from that point, I think we can use this to, if we need to, whatever is the best option for us, seek other opportunities to finance or refinance. But the, the advantage of the State Infrastructure Bank is that we get to, we can defer payments for thirty months before the first payment is due, so using it to, to the best of our advantage.
Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yeah.
Joe.
Yes. That will be moving on to third read. Item K one in third read is ordinance number zero zero four dash two one, and an ordinance approving the renewal of a certain agricultural district located in the city of Napoleon, Ohio, at the location of County Road P, as applied for by Linda, Linda Otterment, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Joel, tell us what's new on this one.
Nothing new to report.
Surprise. Any questions? Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yeah.
Joe.
Yes. Okay, that has been approved on third read. Item L, Good of the City, L one, Discussion or Action Review Recommendations on CRA Agreements from the Housing Council and the Tax Incentive Review Committee. Joel?
The TIRC met, and the Housing Council met earlier today. The TIRC recommended that, made a few recommendations, continuing forward with all active CRAs and then terminating two of them due to property transfers, so that would be the Petro facility, and it would be the, the Stop and Go that didn't get developed and transferred to Main Stop, because Stop and Go purchased Petro, that was the reason. So just both of those have now been terminated at this point. After, after Council approves of, if Council approves of them, and the last piece is that the Napoleon One, which is the Rite Aid facility, that, that is in its last year, so that one will fall off at the, whenever that term is up for that contract, so. Other than that, all the rest of the CRA agreements are in compliance and have either met or exceeded their job numbers at this point, so.
Question?
Yep.
On that Stop and Go that went over to Main Stop, what's the status of that situation? Were they going for one of these then?
Nope.
Okay.
The City Council has the ability to transfer those, since they, but they would have to come forward beforehand, and since nothing's been developed or talked about or requested at this point, it's...
They're still planning the development, but they have not requested that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
They are still scheduled to start in the, in the spring, excuse me.
So do you need a, an approval?
Yes.
For the Housing Council with their recommendation?
Motion, yeah, motion for approval of the recommendations from the TIRC and Housing Council.
Make a motion for approval? Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yeah.
Joe.
Yes. Okay, that has been approved. Item L two, Discussion or Action Approval of Plans and Specifications for the Lynn Avenue Improvement Project. Chad?
Yes, we, we finished the plans for the Lynn Avenue Improvements Project. This project will be Lynn Avenue from Lynnwood to the west, so it'll be St. Paul's side. It'll consist of replacing an existing water line that's in poor condition. We'll also be removing all the curbs, replacing the curbs, and then resurfacing the road. We, we're trying to time the project, so the completion date is, I believe it is
mid-August.
Fourteenth. Is that what, we can have the work done before school resumes? If we put this out to bid this week and open bids end of the month, I don't see anyone moving any dirt or digging until school's out, so we essentially timed it to make it a summer project, because we're trying to avoid conflicts with the school. So just request an approval of the plans and specs, so we can advertise the project this week for bid.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, wants somebody to make a motion to approve the plans?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yeah.
Joe.
Yes. That has been approved. Item L three, Discussion or Action Approval of Specifications for the 2021 Sanitary Sewer Cleaning Program.
Yes, we're, this is an annual project we have. The city has a ten-year schedule that allows us to clean and televise all the sanitary sewers in the entire city system. It is a requirement by the EPA to maintain your system in this way. Normally, we bid this as a three-year contract, which we award to the lowest and best bidder in year one. Years two and three is at our option if we want to award them the following years or rebid it. We're doing two years this time, because we only have two, two, uh, four years left, Jeff will correct me if I'm wrong, we only have four years left in our ten-year cycle, and rather than bid a four-year contract, we elected to do two separate two-years, so the bid will be for twenty-one and twenty-two, and then in twenty-three, we'll come back again and do twenty-three and twenty-four. This year, our budget for the project is $80,000. That's about where they've been coming in at, between $75,000 and $85,000. So we're just requesting approval of the bid documents, so we can get this project started. Completion date is August 28th for this year.
Chad, is this still our first time through the city sewer system like this?
Yes. Now, a few of the, the problem areas, we have cleaned twice.
Okay.
We have a couple that, with the change of direction, as the flow turns, solids drop out and we get a clog, so we have done some twice, but this is our first full ten-year cycle.
You said this is televised, so we can watch this if we want, like, get binge-watch it on...
I'd be more than happy to.
Great. Sounds pretty exciting.
Watch some dirty movies.
Okay. I don't know if I want to ask if we have any more questions or comments, but... If not, we have a motion to approve the specifications.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie, yes.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yeah.
Joe.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we'll go around the table here, and why not start by welcoming Kelly into the building here, the room? Have anything?
I don't have anything.
All right. Molly?
Um, I just wanted to tell Mayor Maslow, he did a nice job tonight.
Thank you.
Proclamation. It's fun to see the community come together again for those girls.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Jeff?
I've got a complaint with garbage already. Actually, recycling bins. My original people decided they don't have to follow the rules in Napoleon right now, so it's gone out for the second week in a row, and now they've got three bins out. Last week was one, they didn't put it away, now there's three bins out there, the night when I was walking, so. They probably need to have a little talk about. That's it.
Is that on Sheffield?
You know, you know, you know the residents.
Okay.
Sheffield and Park.
Anything else, Jeff?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Laurie?
Just to know what Molly said, great job, Mayor.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the team again. Really special event. Nice to see them again. I have a small question about, um, street repair. I know that we've talked in the past about Meccason, and that that's not really on the agenda for a few years anyway, so...
We don't have it programmed into like a five-year program. It is one that needs the sewer replaced before we do the street. We have some, we have the sewer designed, we've never had the street designed, so to do the engineering on it wouldn't be an excessive cost, but that is a concrete-based street, so removal of the old street is a little more than the normal case. I can put numbers together on it and provide it for this fall's budget if you'd like.
I don't know what's best, but it is, it's in bad shape. What would it take to just, you can't just pave over that just to get it right, or...
It'd probably be forty, fifty thousand dollars, paved from Apian to Perry. That's ballpark, I'd have to run numbers, I can, I can run those numbers. But the sewer, the sewer that's under there is part of the system that goes down Third Street, which is probably one of the worst sewers in the city. It does need replaced.
Right.
And that sewer currently goes down Third, then goes straight north under the old grocery store, it was under the store. That's to be abandoned and go down Meccason to Apian. When we did Apian, we planned for that, we just haven't done that phase of it yet.
Uh, what do you, what do you predict for the street to, to hold up until that...
It, it comes down to how bad does it get before it's too bad?
Right.
You can still drive it, we can patch it, it's rough, absolutely. That's one of those, I would be in favor of doing it next year. It'd be a great project, but if the funds aren't available, it's still drivable, we just have to spray patch it more, and we can, we can take a look at it with the spray patch machine when we get fully staffed out there and add it to our list.
I thought I would bring it up. Two people actually talked to me about it, so...
It's, it's pretty rough.
That's all I have. Thanks, Chad.
Thank you, Laurie. Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, Chief, for letting us use the firehouse, and I thought that worked really well. It was really good, so that was, it did on, whoever put that sign together, that was excellent. So Chad, your, your guys did that, appreciate that. That's just, and Amanda for putting all those proclamations together and getting them in those, those folders, so that's team effort all around, so. It was nice to have them here, and nice to be able to give them, give them a nice award, so. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I will repeat what everyone said, you did an excellent job, as usual, with your public speaking there, and I think, I, I was kind of watching the, the crowd and just their appreciation of the things you were saying. I'm sure it really hit home with them and with, with the girls, with the team, so, great job. Chad, I have a question on Michigan Avenue. I see all the pretty colors on there, when is, when's that going to start, and what is, what are they doing there?
Right now, we're in the design phase. It is one of this year's miscellaneous streets projects.
Annual servicing project?
The resurf, yeah, resurfacing project, um, yeah, 'cause if you remember Graceway last year took a bad, bad turn?
Yes.
Well, the other street we're planning is Sheffield. I went out and tested all the streets, and Sheffield was going to be another Graceway, but we caught it, so we're able to take a different direction, and we're not going to run into that. and we're not going to run into that issue since we caught it before we started construction. Essentially, we're going to have to raise the street two inches, but that way, we don't have to go out there and put six inches of asphalt down like we already started. It'll probably save us about $100,000, $150,000 compared to what we ran into on Grace Way. But this year's miscellaneous streets project will be North Sheffield from Woodlawn to La Grange and Michigan from Woodlawn to La Grange. I'm supposed to meet with them, the firm designer, on Thursday. I'll have a better idea of our design schedule after that meeting. Probably, whenever the plans are ready, we'll put it out and then have a completion date mid-October or so. We'll work with Jeff nicely at the school. I know he has a bus stop out there, but I think we can avoid causing problems.
You know, there's an issue at the corner there, Michigan and Woodlawn, on the Michigan, that first house there with having a couple water main breaks, and they had a little bit of issue. Would that be part of the project or just?
It's not part of the project. When we were out there before, we're hopeful we have it stabilized.
Okay.
The water fund is not in good shape. So, we were concentrating our efforts in that neighborhood already to get some of the streets fixed up. We believe we'll be fine. There's not a good way to test all of that, but we believe we'll be okay. But the streets are pretty bad. We're going to replace the curbs and repay the street up there.
That'll look nice. What about the Ober House sewer? How's that coming along?
We have a couple individuals that we're still trying to negotiate with for easement acquisition. I'm hopeful we can negotiate. If we're unable to, we may have to look at a property take. Regardless, I'm hopeful to advertise that project this fall and make it win over.
Okay. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it. Okay, Dan?
I have nothing this evening, sir.
All right. Ken?
Good job, Mr. Mayor, and the opposite of what Jeff was complaining about. Everybody in my neighborhood's right on the ball now. They're not speaking to me, but they're all...
All right, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Ross?
Nothing for me.
Hey, Billy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Hit for game, Mike? Joel?
Thank you. We got docks going in at the boat launch. There'll just be two docks, so people can get their boats in and out, or docks, their, their own docks that they have stored at the, at the park. We did have a gas leak, pretty significant one on Glenwood last week. It was fixed, it was a high-pressure gas line.
Is that what Glenwood got tore up? The road got tore up, the new pavement got tore up?
Yep.
We're working with the gas company to get that repaired.
Okay.
The Safe Routes to Schools grant, we passed the first round, so it's on to the second round of review, so we should hear something back in May, I believe.
Probably May, I'll do the presentation for that.
And also, the wastewater treatment plant, we were anticipating a 0.7% interest rate. We wound up getting a 0.37% interest rate, so that works out a little better in our favor. And the last thing I was going to say is that, oh, there's a couple things. The first one is, I've been talking with Tony about the pool and the opening, and just wanted to get everyone's take on if we want to do a, you know, free day at the pool that day and then just leave the registers open for the seasonal passes. But since it's, it's a codified fee, it would need Council approval to do something like that, so. Just give it some thought. We've got some time yet. Talked with Tony a little bit about that, but just, right now, we're looking at a grand opening, ceremonial-type thing on the 29th, as of right now, so I think, I believe that's a Saturday. And slides going in the 19th, fence posts going in the 12th, paving April 26th.
And the deck coming in the 12th.
And the deck on the 19th, too, that's right. And I don't know, you know, IT Committee met today to talk about the website. You know, I don't know if we wanted to go through with full council when things get, you know, web instinct gets their fixes down and we start kind of tweaking some things, if full council wanted to do a review or, or not, but...
Short presentation, I don't think would hurt.
Okay.
Dustin and Justin put a lot of work into that, so.
Yeah.
I think they deserve to take a few minutes.
Okay. So, maybe at, you know, one of the council meetings, mid-May, would that work? And just have it on Discussion, Action, just go over it real brief, not as, not a half an hour, but by that time, it'll be launched and everybody can, can review it, provide comments or suggestions, edits, things like that at that, at that time, so.
Joel, going back to the pool, the grand opening, is there, I'm assuming there's an occupancy for that place? So, if we would do something saying it's, you know, free to the public that day, do we know what that number is and would we, how would we control that?
I think the occupancy is only for the building, if I'm not mistaken.
And I wasn't sure like how many people go in and per lifeguard with, you know, how many they're, you know, keeping an eye on. I know it's by, I think Tony had said before, depending on...
It's based on their...
Yep, space, so it doesn't matter how many are in that space.
Yep.
But they, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't turning people away after so long and saying, hey, we're, we're sorry, but...
Or counting, have somebody at the door with a counter.
Right, and it would be a good problem to have that we have that many people there.
Yeah.
Because I think it's very exciting to have this, but just wanted to check that.
Nah, he's really reluctant about that, too, but I think we're, no matter what we do, as soon as it opens, I think it's going to have, there's going to be a lot of people there regardless, so.
Right.
You're either going to overwhelm the people taking, you know, at the front desk, or you're going to just, you know...
Yeah, I think we want to get people in the first day.
Yeah.
Free first day. Just to get people in the pool as quickly as possible, and if you want to come back, get your season pass, take your time.
And that's what the register would be open for, is season passes or, you know, the 10-day passes.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Yep.
I like the idea.
As long as the mayor jumps off the diving board, he'll be entertained.
Well, that was the, that was part of the ceremony, is...
Pro-Tom second, right? And that's where it ends.
All right. Anything else, Joel?
Nope, that's it.
All right, I guess, go back to me then, I have a mulligan here.
I'm sorry, I'm just seeing Ken in one of those old-timey bathing suits. You know, knows that I'm from, from the mid-calf all the way up, and I might need the gavel, I'm sorry.
I am going to request one executive session to discuss personnel. So, there's nothing else on Good at the City? Move on.
Yes, just wait, how old are we on personnel for next week? I know the operations is down, what, two, three people?
We just got a, does new guy start next week? I believe, I believe our replacement in the, I got the, Streets Department?
Streets.
Streets, he starts Monday, so that'll help. And we're waiting to find out if one of our employees who was off on medical might be back mid-week this week. We're all in. We'll still be sure.
We still have one other vacancy in water.
Yeah. We will do the best we can. We'll take volunteers from council.
I was just going to say, except for Pro-Tom President Mayor.
The line will stop here.
They've already been, been there and done that. No, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Could I go, have a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call a roll.
Lori, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thanks, Chief.
It'll just be Council and Kelly, please.
Rox, you ready?
I'm ready.
Joel, you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Okay, could I have a motion to come out of executive session to discuss personnel?
Second.
Hey, Rox, call their roll.
Lori, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes. No action taken? So, when we do these motions and second, since we, it's second, does it mean two people have to say it every time?
No. We need, we need Rox, a one and a two. If you have the one, you get the first, and if you have the two, you get a second. Just keep passing the rocks around.
All right, moving on to item N, Approve Payment of Bills. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills shall stand approved. We have a motion for adjournment.
Now he's gun-shy.
Second.
Rox, please call a roll.
Lori, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.